Asking and acknowledging how we can do better and building a bigger table does not cut out anyone. In fact, as Mr. Olson, Ms. Foshing, and Mr. Hegley pointed out in the last meeting, the support staff and opportunities funded by this grant can be utilized by all students. This is a grant full of hope for the future, a future when the public schools better reflect the strength of our increasingly diverse community. And yes, for anyone who's wondering what's coming next, that future looks very different from the world of the past. If the realities of a more inclusive future and the language of this grant cause us to bristle, it's time for some serious self-reflection because we are clinging, pathetically clinging, to an already obsolete past. We have two options as a district. We can get on board and try to remedy our problems, or we can put on the armor of false victimhood, puff out our chests, and arrogantly act as if these dollars are somehow pushing a hidden slippery slope agenda, when in fact, the agenda is clear, and I will share it with you now. We who work in public schools stand with all students and passionately champion marginalized kids. If you think the funding of public schools is a silly game, please gather up your toys and go home, because the excellent teachers, passionate support staff, and visionary administrators of this district have work to do. Vote for a better future. Vote to support this grant.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roche. Our second speaker this evening is Trevor Bouch. Welcome to the board, Trevor. Please approach the podium.
Thank you for having me. I'm here today because I want my students to know that the harmful insensitive rhetoric heard at the last board meeting is not representative of our school community. I'm here today because I want my students to be able to believe that the world is changing for the better and that we are making strides towards a world where hate does not divide. I'm here today as a father because I desperately want my daughter to grow up in a world where diversity of race, culture, and thought is not feared but honored and respected. As an English-language teacher, I work with students of color, migratory students, and students of low socioeconomic status every single day. I watch as many of my students read and write well below grade level, and consequently, this limiting—excuse me—and I watch as this consequently inhibits their success in content classes. The path to higher education and pursuit of a better life for this population of students is already littered with barriers. We stand here today with an important opportunity to ease some of the barriers for the children in our schools, for the children in my classroom. With such a powerful opportunity at hand, it is difficult to understand how someone on our own school board with a real seat at the table could be actively working against funding to better serve our schools. Those who have studied the district's real data can conclusively agree that our students of color and those who qualify for free and reduced are not finding success at rates comparable to their white counterparts. The data suggests this to be the case in nearly every statistical category, including MCA, FAST, literacy, and graduation rates. Has every board member here studied this data? If we choose to ignore these facts, we are failing to uphold our strategic plan and should consider changing our district motto to "Most Students, Most Days." At the state level, you will find similar disparities in achievement across the racial and socioeconomic groupings, which are only further evidenced on a national scale. Even if hypothetically, this funding were exclusively for these students, the data suggests that it would still be a slam dunk for our district. The irony of the situation is that we are not discussing funding for a limited group of students, but for an entire population of struggling learners. How can one look at this data and not understand the importance of achievement and integration for Monticello schools? I stand here today because I know in my heart that the students I serve every day deserve better. They deserve someone at the table who is reflective of their influence with each choice they make. They deserve advocates at every level of the system looking out for their best interests. If your personal agenda stands before you and making the choices in the best interest of our students and community, then this role is not for you. Thank you.
Our third speaker this evening is Tina Hanks-Slaban. Tina, welcome to the board. You may approach the podium.
Is this somebody? Is this supposed to be here? It's distracting. Okay. Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I just—I know lots of people in this room, and I just appreciate every one of you—teachers, board members, and thank you for your service. I just really appreciate it. I am here with some concerning literature that has been found at our high school. I'm going to read you—I could either do sex or drugs, so I'm going to do the sex because—I don't— The book is Tricks by Ellen Hopkins. "The Squad Out of the Sails, in Love With Me, Looks Like Loneliness Works Both Ways. Here Are Tears at Zion. Jerome Will Not Help Me Reconnect With Andrew, Neither Will He. Leave My Door Unlocked So I Can Slip Away Into the Desert Night, Plan B, Unless... What Would He Do If I Asked Him To Run Away With Me? Does He Really Believe? Does He Love Me? Would the Desert Tears of Zion And the Father? Is This A Job Or True Devotion? Could I Convince Him? Could I Make Him Believe I'm In Love With Him Too? Could I Live With Myself Afterward? Could I Ever Be Forgiven For Such Painful Deception? As I Sit Here Alone Questioning Phrases Tumbled Into My Head, You'll Be Here For The Seamless Future, Make The Best Of It, Guys Like Vibrators Too." Plan C begins to formulate. Yes, it's wrong, but not as wrong as everything else. Means courting Jerome's affection, pretending to enjoy his deviant sex. Tonight's this means letting him call me mommy. As he sits—as he sits on the lap and nurses. I stroke his hair as the mother would, dig deep into the words. Mommy loves you, Jerome. That excites him. As I gestured, it would. I love you too, mommy. See how much? Oh, Andrew, even if you do find me, how can you ever love me again after this? I hold stubbornly to the dream that he will. As Jerome turns his belly to mommy. I'm sorry, this sickens me. Love or no love, Jerome wants to punish mommy. The sex is rough, but it doesn't hurt nearly as bad as the pretense. And it's even faster than usual. When he finishes, I lay my head on his knobby chest. Too bad you have to go. It would be nice to sleep together all night. Jerome's chin lifts and falls against my hair. Uh, that surely would be nice. I will roll on top of him, look up into his eyes. What if we—soft kisses, never mind. He shivers. It must too—too easy. I feel almost evil when he whispers, "What?" I set up. I slide the naked place between my legs over his skin. We could leave together. He shakes his head. His body stiffens. No, I couldn't do it. It would be wrong. No more wrong than this. I lean forward. I cut my breasts, rub them over his face. Confusion seeps into his—
It's Hanks-Slaban. Your time is up.
Sorry. I just—if you could just give me a minute. I have a 17-year-old, and I wouldn't want him to read this. I wouldn't want it in my house. I don't want him to be able to—you want it in the public library? That's one thing. But we are responsible for what we put in these young kids' minds, and to have this available—we have filters for our Chromebooks. We have, hopefully, teachers that think that this is not okay, that would be like, "I don't want my son to check this out." And if this is available to him, that he—he could check it out without my knowledge?
Hanks-Slaban.
I can put parameters on it, but this is disgusting.
Your time is finished. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brittany Bauer. Brittany, please approach the podium and welcome to the board.
Thank you all—sorry about that. Thank you all staff members who work for Monticello Schools. Thank you for working for our students. I like the school district's motto of "Every Kid, Every Day," and I hope we can continue moving forward, working towards that goal and that motto. I'm going to read two passages from a book called Mondays Not Coming by Tiffany Jackson. This was found in the middle school library, which was available to 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, and I feel like it contains some pornographic material. There was swearing in this book 94 times, gender slurs more than five times, and sexual slurs 23 times. It has alcohol, marijuana, and meth use exhibited in this book. I feel like it is inappropriate for any minor child to read this, and so I guess I am concerned that it was in our public library, available to students. As a parent of children who love to read, I would not want one of my kids to get ahold of this book. Page 246. "Shh, the boy hushed her, his voice muffled. You making a mess? I tipped towards the door, peering through the window at the boy. His pants around his ankles squeezed between April's straddled legs as she lay on top of a teacher's desk. I swung the door wide, letting a soft light from the hallway shine a spotlight on them." There's a swear word. Keith muttered, pulling up his pants, jumping off of April. She scrambled to cover herself— Jerome's Chin Lifts And Falls Against My Hair. That Surely Would Be Nice. I Will Roll On Top Of Him, Look Up Into His Eyes. What If We? Soft Kisses, Never Mind. He Shivers. It Must Too Easy. I Feel Almost Evil When He Whispers. What? I Set Up. I Slide The Naked Place Between My Legs Over His Skin. We Could Leave Together. He Shakes His Head, His Body Stiffens. No, I Couldn't Do It. It Would Be Wrong. No More Wrong Than This. I Lean Forward, I Cut My Breasts, Rub Them Over His Face. Confusion Seeps Into His--
It's Hanks-Slaban. Your time is up.
Sorry. I just, if you could just give me a minute. I have a 17-year-old, and I wouldn't want him to read this. I wouldn't want it in my house. I don't want him to be able to. If you wanted it in the public library, that's one thing. But we are responsible for what we put in these young kids' minds, and to have this available. We have filters for our Chromebooks. We have, hopefully, teachers that think that this is not okay, that would be like, I don't want my son to check this out. And if this is available to him, that he could check it out without my knowledge, I can put parameters on it. But this is disgusting.
Your time is finished. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brittany Bauer. Brittany, please approach the podium and welcome to the board.
Thank you all. Sorry about that. Thank you all staff members who work for Monticello Schools. Thank you for working for our students. I like the school district's motto of "Every Kid, Every Day," and I hope we can continue moving forward, working towards that goal and that motto. I'm going to read two passages from a book called Mondays Not Coming by Tiffany Jackson. This was found in the middle school library, which was available to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and I feel like it contains some pornographic material. There was swearing in this book 94 times, gender slurs more than five times, and sexual slurs 23 times. It has alcohol, marijuana, and meth use exhibited in this book. I feel like it is inappropriate for any minor child to read this, and so I guess I am concerned that it was in our public library, available to students. As a parent of children who love to read, I would not want one of my kids to get ahold of this book. Page 246. "Shh, the boy hushed her, his voice muffled. You Making A Mess." I tipped towards the door, peering through the window at the boy. His pants around his ankles squeezed between April's straddled legs as she lay on top of a teacher's desk. I swung the door wide, letting a soft light from the hallway shine a spotlight on them. There's a swear word. "Keith muttered, pulling up his pants, jumping off of April. She scrambled to cover herself, her mouth dropping." And I do hope, out of respect, there's no minor children in this. It doesn't look like it right now. And then the second one I wanted to go over was on page 299. "Jacob Rolled His Eyes. All Right, Look, Me And Monday, We Did Do Something." He took a deep breath. "She, Well, She Sucked My D-I-C-K. I Didn't Really Want It To Happen, It Just Kinda Did. You, You Nasty, You Lion. I Swear On My Mom She Did. She Just Kept Saying She Really Wanna Be Together, And She Trying To Come In My House And Stuff All The Time. My Mom Says She Was Too Fast." So I hope that books that are coming into the library are being scanned and reviewed as I just would be devastated if my child were to read this in a book. So I felt like that was something I did have to bring to knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Our next speaker is Corinne Luzinski. Ms. Luzinski, please approach the podium and welcome to the board.
Hello, board members. I appreciate your service to the community. You take countless hours away from your families and careers and personal lives to do what you do for us. Thank you very much. Humans were created with the unique ability to reason. With that gift comes the ability to ask questions in a quest to seek a deeper understanding. Members of the school board recently engaged in just such an activity pertaining to the A&amp;I grant. Questions were asked with the intent to glean a deeper understanding of the grant and the way that it was written to obtain funds for this district. In response to this questioning, an email was sent to all publicly-paid district staff in the union ostracizing those board members who were just seeking a deeper understanding. This kind of action leads one to ask. If certain staff members feel emboldened to criticize and condemn an adult for asking a question, how are students treated in the classroom when they ask questions that contradict the belief system of a district staff member? Are they too criticized and condemned for asking questions? Or are they encouraged for evoking critically-thinking discussions? This behavior is contradictory to the character development listed within the vision of a learner and goes against the district statement of developing persons of integrity. While we know that not all district staff members are engaging in this behavior, it is deeply concerning that these actions demonstrated within the education community could be reflective of the actions demonstrated in our classrooms. Allowing our elected school board members to seek clarification through tough questions is their responsibility. Please allow them to do what they are elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luzinski. Our next speaker is Joan Owen. Joan Owen here. Thank you and welcome to the board.
Thank you. Hello. I grew up in Monticello, and now I'm a parent and teacher in this district. I tell my students not to be silent bystanders when they witness something unjust, and instead to have the courage to stand up and speak out. So here I stand in front of our school board and community members with a message to my students and coworkers. To my students, including students of color, I do not think that working to close the achievement gap and to improve the diversity of our staff is a game or a negative concession as stated at last week's school board meeting. On the contrary, I think it is important because all of you are important. To our current and future staff hired as part of the Achievement and Integration Grant, I do not agree with the insinuations made at last week's board meeting that you are anything less than qualified, competent professionals, or that hiring you will somehow lead to something bad for our schools. The opposite is true. You have been and will continue to be valued assets to everyone in our learning community. Thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Good evening. Thank you, board members, for what you do and your commitment of time to what you do. I am here to talk about the A&amp;I proposed plan. In the current proposal, I see in Goal One about replacing curriculum. And so my question is, why are we replacing it? And is it really necessary to replace it now? And that's a question. In Goal Number Five, last week, we learned that this is kind of a national problem that exists across the country, and it may be tough for any school district to accomplish it. So if this is true, is it necessary that we even have it in the proposed plan? I have a question to the board. Have you, with these A&amp;I plans, have you looked at other district plans? This past week, I've looked at seven different A&amp;I plans. I'm not 100% sure if those were passed because when I Google them, I see them and that. And I'm looking to see about the verbiage of students of color that I see in our proposed plan. And what I see is our current plan, when I went on the Monticello website, it looks like Goal Number Three uses the word "students of color," and it has two strategies, numbers nine and 10, that use the word "student of color." So if I'm right, I see three times that the word "students of color" is used in our current plan. In our proposed plan, I count at least 14 times that the word "students of color" is used. When I was looking at the plans this week, I also got my Wright County Journal Press and saw in there about Buffalo School Board having just passed their proposed plan. So I went on their website after reading it and not seeing any verbiage of "students of color" in their plan. They have only three goals in their plan. It seems to be a much simpler plan. And yet, I'm thinking, okay, if they're wanting to get their money for their plan, for their district, I'm thinking they would use whatever they need to do to get that money, and they seem to have gone with a much simpler wording of their plan and that. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our last speaker today is Mr. Peter Berquist. Mr. Berquist, welcome to the board, and you may approach the podium.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Berquist. I'm a teacher here in Monticello. Tonight, I'll be speaking as Vice President of Education, Minnesota, Monticello. After the school board meeting that took place on February 27th, we had dozens of teachers and community members reach out to us in frustration and disbelief, asking, "How will we respond?" That puts us and myself in a difficult position. The members of EMM have varying political, religious, and social beliefs. The members of EMM, oh, sorry, it isn't possible for me to share the opinions of all 300-plus members in our union. After hearing the disturbing comments made at the last board meeting and having to table the vote on the A&amp;I grant, we felt compelled to speak on behalf of our members and the students we serve. Despite those varying political, religious, and social beliefs of our union members, there are a set of absolutes that we can all agree on: the core beliefs we all share, the truths we live on a daily basis. We will educate, care for, and advocate for every student that walks through our doors. We will support, encourage, and stand by every staff member and employee willing to join us in that endeavor. And we will dedicate ourselves to making Monticello School District a place that makes all people feel welcomed and valued. We want to be a model district. This A&amp;I grant has and will continue to help us work towards that goal. Not accepting the A&amp;I grant would hurt all people who attend and work for this district, and we will always stand with and for every kid, every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berquist. We are now going to return to, I want to thank everybody for their comments, seriously. I know this has been a difficult week for our community, and we're going to have more discussion as we move through the agenda this evening, but we will get through all of this. We will. The next item on our agenda this evening is approval of the agenda as it stands, and this is made a motion on.
So moved. Seconded.
So a motion to approve this evening's agenda made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Jamie Seben. We're going to do a roll call vote. Hegley?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Seben?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Root?
Aye.
Zbarth?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Now, moving on to our consent agenda, we have two components to that. Some of, I'm going to give a little more information than I usually do because we have a very large crowd in attendance tonight. Our consent agenda is distributed to board members several days ahead of the meeting, and they have the opportunity to read all of the documents and ask questions. So we do address all of the items in the Approval of the Minutes from February 27th and the Personnel Matters. Those are also linked, and you're free to read those at any point as part of our consent agenda. So with our consent agenda this evening, this is an action item, and I--
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion by Melissa Curtis to accept our consent agenda, seconded by Mark Branson. We're going to do a roll call vote again. Zbarth, aye. Root?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Seben?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Hegley?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to Innovation and Leadership, I have a board chair statement that I'm going to read that has been seen by everyone on the board and conferred to. "As leaders of the Monticello School District, we want to begin this agenda item with a short statement from district administration and the Monticello School Board for our staff members and families that have expressed concern over discussion in our last board meeting. To our families negatively impacted by these statements, please know that we see you, we value you, and we believe that achievement and integration is a primary goal for every student in our schools. Monticello Public Schools does believe deeply in the significance of our motto, 'Every Kid, Every Day.' What we do not believe is that every student is the same, nor that every student requires the same resources. It is our belief that every student deserves great opportunity. Every student deserves access to quality programming, and that every student deserves the resources they need to be successful in and out of the classroom. Monticello School District believes strongly in delivering fair, just, and impartial instruction. We understand that while all kids deserve great opportunities, not all kids learn well through the same use of resources or programming. We will continue to strive to differentiate education for all students within Monticello School District by seeing them for who they are, what they need, and meeting them exactly where they're at." Thank you. Now, moving on to Item B, the Achievement and Integration Plan, we have Cindy Foshing here to speak with us and give us more information.
Good evening. I think this got closed, Gavin. All right. I'd like to start again. We want to review the purpose of the Achievement and Integration Program. So the purpose of the A&amp;I program for Minnesota is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational outcomes, or opportunities, excuse me, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in Minnesota schools. So where did the history begin of the Achievement and Integration Program? Minnesota's Integration Revenue Fund was part of legislation adopted during the George Bush administration in 2002 as part of the No Child Left Behind Act. In a report from the Office of Legislative Auditor in 2005, it was cited that the program needed more focus and oversight. The report made several recommendations for improvement, including asking the legislature to authorize MDE to establish criteria against which school districts must evaluate their integration plans and fulfill its responsibilities for overseeing integration revenue programming. This eventually led to changes in integration funding across all states in Minnesota. The Achievement and Integration Program was established in 2012, 2013, and replaced Minnesota's former Integration Revenue Program. A 12-member task force charged with evaluating the use of state integration aid for K-12 schools began meeting on November 15, 2011. The task force was appointed jointly by the commissioner, who named six members, and by the House and Senate, which named three members each. The purpose of the department's Integration Revenue Replacement Task Force was to develop recommendations for repurposing integration revenue funds to create and sustain opportunities for improved educational outcomes that narrow and close the achievement gap. As a result, Achievement and Integration Revenue began in 2013-2014 school year. Recommendations were made to the legislature in a report submitted February 15, 2012. This report outlines the requirement for the Minnesota Department of Education to evaluate districts' plans and progress towards their goals. This is the method the districts currently use for planning, implementing, and evaluating their achievement and integration goal strategies. In addition, in 2013, Minnesota introduced the World's Best Workforce Statute, which is Statute 120B.11. Achievement and integration plans are required to align with the goals set forth in the district's World Best Workforce Plans. So what is Monticello's history with the A&amp;I plan? Monticello Public Schools began their Achievement and Integration Program in 2018-19 in the middle of the 2017-2020 Achievement and Integration three-year cycle. We are currently completing our 2020-2023 three-year plan that included $291,716 in 2021, $300,995 in 2022, and $336,084 in 2023. We have drafted our 2023-2026 plan for the next three years, which does include $363,617 for next year. In order to develop, excuse me, in order to develop a highly, a high-quality Achievement and Integration Plan that will benefit all students in our district, we assembled an Achievement and Integration Leadership Team made up of the following members with educational lenses from all places. So I don't want to read through that list, but you can see there's a list of administrators, there are a list of district literacy specialists, district social worker, MTSS coordinator, we have principals, we have representatives from the American Indian Advisory Committee, family liaison, representative from the school board, several members. So what steps did we take to develop our A&amp;I plan? Starting on November 29, 2022, the Achievement and Integration Leadership Team met to begin the process of developing the new 2023-2026 plan. Through five different meetings and 10 hours of time together, we did the following. We collected and analyzed data through a multi-tiered system of supports lens. We determined possible root causes and student needs that came from that data. We prioritized our needs within the district's and schools' control. We considered possible goals and measures for the plan, aligning them with our World's Best Workforce Achievement Goals. We developed strategies to help reach our goals that serve all Monticello students, inclusive of every person and every family. And we determined positions and staffing needed in order to implement our strategies and developed our A&amp;I budget accordingly to those needs. So within that budget, we decided on these positions that were needed in order to achieve our goals. We have a district literacy specialist, which is partly funded through A&amp;I and partly funded through our MTSS grant. We have a district social worker, partly funded through A&amp;I, partly through the bounce-back program with center care, district instructional coach, mentor program lead, partly through A&amp;I-- mentor program lead, partly through A&amp;I, partly through the general fund, family liaison, advocate, interpreter, part A&amp;I, part Title III funding. We have math tutor and credit recovery at the high school to help students who are struggling and behind in credits, and we want to add a reading coach, partly funded through A&amp;I and the general fund. Just to help you understand what some of these roles are like and what they offer to our district and to every student, I wanted to bring up just a few people who are funded through the A&amp;I plan. So I'd like for Lindsey Repman, our district literacy specialist, to come forward and just talk a little bit about what she does.
Hello. As Cindy said, this is the first year of having a full-time literacy specialist in the district, and the bulk of my time is spent working on our core instruction as a district. Our ultimate goal is to raise achievement for all students, and that core instruction piece is the big piece for all kids, but also is really key for our students who are most striving readers and writers. We need to have a solid core instruction. We're doing that through delivering and developing professional development. Some of that is I'm doing it on my own. Sometimes I'm doing that with admin, and what's been wonderful is this year I've been doing that also with other teachers. This year, we've also been involved in curriculum review, so taking what we've been learning in professional development and being able to align that with the commercial resources that we can find and finding what's the best fit for our district. Next year, I can foresee more communication in my role. So we already have a literacy plan. We've been revising our literacy plan, but we want to create something that's a little bit more outward-facing, that can convey even more clearly what it is that anyone can expect for programming for their child at Monticello Schools.
Next, I'd like to introduce Sarah Well, who is our district's social worker, and she will share with her some of the major parts of her job.
Thank you. Some of the things that I do within our district is work with district leaders and community leaders on social-emotional development and strategies to promote resiliency and collaboration with the bounce back project. I oversee mental health programming district-wide in collaboration with the social workers and counselors district-wide. I oversee our mindfulness programming, which is grades K through 5, and that funding is provided by the United Way Grant, which I write and submit each year. I oversee our district wellness day, which we just had, and it's a professional development day for all staff to include certified staff, support staff, administrative assistants, food service, paras, behavior interventionists. I'm also the district 504 coordinator, when I help implement training, ensure we are following policies and law, update procedures as needed, along with our counselors and social workers. I plan and implement professional development for our paras. I'm a member of the Centricare Monticello Bounce Back Project team, a member of the Safety Committee, also the Wellness Committee. I lead district social workers and counselors. We meet very regularly and plan for all students. I help with crisis intervention and planning. I implement training. I update district and building crisis and incident plans with a team, create admin goadbags in case of a crisis. I'm thankful for that for all of our administrators, in case, hopefully, that will never happen. I oversee and facilitate the Every Meal Program district-wide, which is a free program for all students, and it's a weekend meal program. Couple key community events that I help facilitate is, one is our Back to School Bash, which is in August. This last August was the first time that we had it, and we partnered with Cody from Players Chiropractic to create this event, and it's free to everyone in the public to attend. We had 30 booths, which entailed community resources, student talent, and student athletics and clubs. There's food trucks, and ambulance, police, and fire trucks. There was a bounce house, face painting. There's free school supplies, hygiene products, socks, toothpaste, toothbrushes, you name it. It was there. The first time this happened, and 1,200 people attended this event right here at our middle school, the energy was positive and fun for everyone who participated, and I can't wait to do it again this August, on August 23rd, so keep that in mind. Another event is our Better Together Wellness Event. That is also funded through the Centricare Foundation, and that is also free to everyone to attend. This was a collaborative event between Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello Schools. This was created to help build skills of resiliency, provide social connection. We had make-and-take stations and community resources available to everyone. There was food trucks and concession stands, resources. We had high school leaders there leading other members, other small kids. It was really cool. We had 600 books to hand out to all families. And if you've never heard, it's Cuckoo Kangaroo was our entertainment and provided songs and dancing. Lots of smiles and fun were had by all on that day, and I think some of you in the audience were there. And what's really cool is that we also had district superintendents, city mayors, leaders participate, and they had a friendly competition, and it was another great event. There was 1,500 people who participated in this amongst three communities. This event will happen again, thankful to the Centricare Foundation and the collaboration between us, three districts, and our communities, and it will be held again on April 30th, right here in Monticello at our memorial stadium. Thank you.
As you can see, there's an incredible amount of time and talent that goes into what just those two staff members are doing, not to mention all the other staff members on the list. So in conclusion, these positions are critical to our goals for improved student achievement and professional development over the next three years. We ask for your support in achieving our goals by accepting $363,617 in funding through the Achievement and Integration Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, and Sarah, and Lindsey. That was really essential foundational information on where this program comes from, and you might notice I'm using the word "program." One of the things that has been misunderstood about the A&amp;I program is that it has been represented as a grant, and it is not a grant. It is actually a program that was established within the law at the legislature that has administered a stream of funding through the Department of Education. So maybe all of us could have, take a moment to just change our language around that because I think some of the misunderstandings that have been around is because we assumed that a grant was administered, or sought, or handled in a certain way, and that isn't what this stream of funding is. So I really thank Cindy for doing such a deep dive and presenting us with all of the background information. At this point, we're going to have discussion, motion, and vote, and so I'm going to open it up now to the members of the board for any discussion on the A&amp;I program and Cindy's report to the legislature. I'm sorry, report to the Board of Education. Got that wrong.
Yeah, one of the things I want to state is, you know, one of the things to do is rate students on their performance, and when I look at the 2022-2023 versus 2024, there were multiple targets that were missed in 2023 that were set up. Now those targets aren't all present in 2024. The second part is, in 2023, 22-23, $297,000 was for student services. This year, there's more money, but only $297,000, so there's a 7% reduction, and there's a 140% increase going to the professional development side, $22,000 to $53,000. So my concern there is, we're not actually, we missed targets on 2023. We changed the targets for 2024. We didn't increase our actual student services on what they're requesting.
Yeah, I can address that. As we looked at the data for this year, this is what the needs were showing that we should move forward with and make a plan for. As far as the last year, I know that we have, well, actually Cindy had conversations at the state level, and the state level even suspended some of the requirements during that time because we were in the COVID pandemic.
One thing that's never been mentioned is, of the missed targets, what are we doing to bring those targets up that aren't actually in this one anymore? Are we just going to forget about those ones?
I think the new data would show that the students that came back after the pandemic, they have different needs, and we've been addressing those needs since the start of the school year. We've had to reset across the district. Those goals, while some of us want to go back sometimes to those days, we've had to reset all of our behavior and academic goals to meet the students where they're at now, and that's something that's constant in education. That's why most plans are very, very fluid. They're not something that you can write, and then three years later, take them out of the shelf, and that's the plan that you can implement. Each year, you, in fact, great districts are able to keep looking at data consistently throughout the course of the year, and that's what we do as a district. That's why we've implemented goals around professional learning communities throughout the school year. So we are addressing these things now. Some of them existed back then, and are, you know, so I'm not saying that they're all gone, but I'm saying that there is a new need with our students of today.
In addition to that, two out of the three years that we were in this current plan were affected by COVID and COVID restrictions and the inability for students to work in close proximity, teachers to work in close proximity. There were a lot of things that we could not get to, and as Eric said, between 2020 and 2024, a lot of different needs have changed, and we had to reevaluate our needs in order to write our goals. And then to address the increase in improvement funding, remember that when you don't meet your goals, which I would venture to say there might not have been a single district in the entire state that met their goals because of the COVID restrictions that took place, but when you don't meet your goals, then you should dedicate up to 20% or as close to 20% as you can get to improvement fundings to be sure that teachers are trained in order to be able to do that. And so that's why the improvement funding has gone up that way.
I know one of the things that I got to hear from a conversation with Cindy and Lindsey and Sarah, but, you know, I think we, as educators, we welcome accountability. That's what we want, and so this plan is a plan that a committee is putting together moving forward, and we will put that up in front of everybody throughout the course of the school year, and that doesn't scare us. Like, this is a good thing for all kids, and we're proud of it, and I think that's the making of, helping students achieve all they can.
Casey, I just want to say too that I think, from what I've heard from our educators, nobody expects that we can recover from the pandemic losses in one year or even two years. It's probably going to take substantially longer than that for students to recover the learning loss that they had, just to get back to where we were before things started. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding, so I don't think there's an expectation from the board that we will have a goal and we will meet it, then we'll have another goal and we'll meet that one. I think we're all realistic that coming out of the pandemic is going to be a tough time for all of us in terms of what can we expect and how fast can we expect to make improvements. I do think that we're committed to measuring each kid against their own progress and making sure that all kids are improving, and certainly as parents, that's something you should be discussing with your child's teacher at the elementary level and then teachers at middle school and high school level. Is there any other further discussion from any board members on the A&amp;I program? Mr. Hegley, I want to make sure I haven't omitted you there in our remote location.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we will close discussion at this point. Do I have a motion to move the Achievement and Integration Plan?
We shouldn't have moved to vote?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made by Casey, motion seconded by Jeff Hegley to move the Achievement and Integration Report to a vote. We're going to do a roll call vote. Hegley?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Seben?
Aye.
Branson?
No.
Root?
No.
Zbarth?
Aye.
Motion passes four to two. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're moving on. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to move on with the agenda, but thank you for your decorum. We are now moving on to budget assumptions. Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Operations, is going to give us a report and several different budget scenarios.
I'll be brief. Don't leave. Okay, Gavin. You promised. Oh, there it is. It's not showing up on here. Okay. So tonight, I have budget assumptions. I'm asking for approval. And I can't, I don't see it, Gavin, so you're going to have to move forward for me. So just as a reminder for our timeline, December, the first step is to approve our property tax levy in December. Normally, we would have enrollment projections in November, but I was switching to a new enrollment model, so we did that in January, as well as our first financial forecast. But now we're on to having an official approval of our budget assumptions for the 23-24 school year, so I'm asking for that approval tonight. So going through the assumptions on the next slide, we start with enrollment. And so with enrollment projections, we have our projected enrollment of the students in our buildings, and so the students in our buildings contain our students that receive services from our co-op and then also our Monticello students. So it's not necessary that we get money for all those students. And then we have what's our enrollment that we use for budgeting purposes. What do we get money for? Because the students in our buildings that are receiving services from our co-op, that money flows through them. So that our budget enrollment assumptions are a little bit less than what's projected. Next, we have revenue assumptions. So with the 2023 legislative session in progress, right now, using the governor's proposal of a 4% increase in our general education aid for 23-24, we have similar state special aid funding with our three districts and our co-op. We have revised compensatory funds with higher number of families that are eligible with free and reduced due to Medicaid and the direct cert eligibility that opened up. Our CARES or ARP money, SIR money, are coming to an end, and we have other grants in place, the Grow Your Own, MTSS, Rigorous Coursework. That'll be year two. And then I had two scenarios, not knowing what was going to happen with the A&amp;I plan, one scenario where it was approved, and then scenario two where it's not approved. With our expenditures on the next slide. For staffing, there are changes based on enrollment. So example, we have larger number of students moving from the middle school to the high school. So what are some staffing changes that will happen, and then based on student needs as well? So from our December meeting, our listening session, there was, you know, advocacy for reduced class sizes, so adding an elementary classroom teacher, and then also increasing our gifted and talented teachers from .8 to 1.0 in our general fund to also help with class size reduction. One English language teacher, two additional building subs to help with the sub shortage that we're seeing. We already have one at our high school in our revised budget, but moving forward, having three total. And then one and a half reading coaches to help with literacy that was mentioned earlier. And then on the special ed side, seeing higher needs, again, two specialized teachers, two behavioral interventionists, and then a full-time education support specialist and a part-time education support specialist. Next slide with more staffing assumptions, that we'll have at least three retirements going into next year where we'll see some savings. Our salary and benefit changes will be based on either contracts that are already approved or we're going into negotiations for some contracts. We'll develop some leadership teams at our buildings to dive deeper into data, and that we will discontinue our elementary online program. Also with our expenditure assumptions on the next slide, we have our supplies and utility budgets increasing anywhere from 0 to 8%, depending on what it is. We won't borrow short-term for cash flow. That'll save us $70,000-80,000 interest costs. And then our total expenditures will add up or end up half a percent below budget or under budget. Fund balance assumptions, we have our district fund balance policy on the next slide, Gavin, of 8 to 16%. We utilize our committed severance fund balance to pay retiree obligations, severance obligations. Our carryover balances will be on hold and evaluated at the end of the year. We'll defer our third-party billing fund balance into '24-'25 to help the funding gap that will happen in year two. And then with scenario one, our fund balance was going to end up around 9.5%, again with the A&amp;I plan approved, or scenario two, where the fund balance ends around 9% if it wasn't approved. Our final assumption is that we'll utilize our- Our final assumption is that we'll utilize our trust for our non-certified employee retirements with insurance costs. And then the last graph just had the scenarios of one and two. And two is divided up into an A or B, but we don't really need to get into those because that's 24, 25 and 25, 26. We're really just focusing on 23, 24 budgeting right now. So asking for approval for either budget scenario one and those budget assumptions presented, or budget scenario number two with those assumptions presented.
Thank you Tina, that was a very good report. I'd like to open it for discussion. Any questions from any board members for Tina? Any questions? Mr. Hegley, just want to make sure I include you. Seeing no further discussion, this is an action item. I need a motion to move it forward.
Motion to approve the presented budget assumptions by Tina?
Second.
Motion brought by Jamie Seben, seconded by Casey Root. We have, proceed with a roll call vote. Hegley?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Seben?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Root?
Aye.
Zbarth? Aye. Motion passes six, zero. Moving into capital requests, this is also Tina Burkholder going to give us a presentation on that. Thank you Tina.
So at our previous board meetings, we saw a very complete list of capital needs from, from the buildings and the list was long. But we only have just over a million coming into us next school year that we, you know, with existing legislation that's approved. For next year, we have a large English language arts curriculum adoption that's happening, as similar that's happening to other school districts. So using a conservative approach where curriculum would need a total of 400,000 to spread that over two years of a payment plan. So more is being allocated to curriculum next year just because of that large curriculum adoption. And so because of that, we are only able to get to either the top or the top couple requests to each school building to, and it's around 20,000 to 30,000 each per building where we're able to address capital needs. So we're, you know, looking again at their top priority. If future legislation is approved, we'll take a look at this list because the needs have already been identified. If additional safety and security money is approved, we can use the requests with security cameras and utilize that funding. Or if there's additional one-time capital money that's approved, we can access that and kind of go deeper in our list. But for now, this is what we know. And so we have a very short list of capital needs that we're able to get to for the 23, 24 school year.
Thank you Tina. Could you briefly inform our audience about how money has to be saved, spent within certain categories? We cannot save money on a roof or a parking lot and divert that to health insurance premiums. Do you want to say anything?
So with capital funds, there's a tight grid of, that the state allows for purposes. So anything that you capitalize, for us, we capitalize any asset over 2,500. So ideally, anything over that amount and it's for the purpose of longer than a year. So for supplies or things like that, that's, you know, utilized and you need more of that, it's not really allowed. And it's very limited on the support staff that you can pay with this. Basically, our technology director is what we can pay with this money or some of the staff. But right now, we only use like half of his position that we utilize with capital. So it's very restricted on what we can use. There's another pot of money called long-term facility maintenance revenue that we utilize for projects that are preventative maintenance. It's been described as if you had a snow globe and your school building was in a snow globe, you tipped it upside down, anything that didn't fall out was what you could utilize long-term facility maintenance money. So we have that budget also that we take care of. And there's another plan that you would approve, so that, that'll be coming later where we use that for roofs, parking lots, carpets, cabinets, doors. But it has to be like for like. You can't just change the light fixtures because you want to. They have to be end of life and you're replacing them.
Thank you Tina. Opening this up for discussion, does anyone have any questions for Tina? Any questions for Tina? I did want to point out, she, she talked about it briefly, but the items that are listed were identified by individual buildings. They had a wish list and then had to pare it down as to what their top items were. And it looks like each building had approximately $20,000 that they could allocate towards capital expenses. So we did have some questions about some of the items, how were they chosen, who participated in that decision? And I'm, I'm confident that that went through a very robust process to determine what those items would be. Any, do you want to make any comments to that?
Yeah, it's not just a list of five or eight items, it's an extensive list.
It's a quite extensive list. This is also an action item, so we're going to close conversation and discussion on this and move into a motion. Do I have a motion to approve Tina's capital requests?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Dead.
Motion to approve Tina's capital requests as presented by Casey, seconded by Jamie Seben. This is a roll call vote. Zbarth? Aye. Root?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Seben?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Hegley?
Aye.
Sorry, I jumped the gun a bit there. Motion passes six, zero. Thank you. And now we're going to move into our last item on the agenda, committee reports. Just to inform our audience a little bit, we as a board have decided to try to be a little more transparent to our public and to our, to the staff that we work for as to what we're doing when we're not sitting at the board table here. So some boards, sometimes you might hear a criticism saying, well, that's a rubber stamp board. All they do is show up and vote and then they disappear again. But we're, we're busy and involved with a great number of committees and other assignments when we're not sitting at the board table. So our goal is that each, at each meeting, and there's two meetings per month, or no, one, one meeting per month, three of us will give reports on the committees and activities that we're doing. Then the following month, the other three members of the board will give an update on their committees. So that's what this portion of the agenda is about. For those of you that have not been on our website, there is a, a school board tab and you can go to the school board tab and we have started posting a board update on a roughly weekly basis. I may not post one next week during spring break because not a lot's going to happen next week. But there's a board update and any communications from the board going back to January. And that's also where you will find out more activities that the board members are doing. Eventually, we're going to add more information to that section of the school board tab. You'll be able to look and see who's on what committee and where, you know, what activities are they involved in. So for today, I'm going to give a report, Jamie Seben and Melissa Curtis on our activities. And I'd like to ask Melissa if she'd be comfortable going first.
Sure. I thought I was last on Melissa's.
Ah, I mixed it up a little bit.
I can go first. I gotta turn that on, sorry. Okay. I'm on the Wright Tech board. I think it's because Kathy's is on maybe, is that it? Meeting tomorrow, it's the first Tuesday of the month at 6:30. So I'm just reporting on what's happened recently on the last meeting that I went to. We can talk about the January 10th meeting. They approved the 2023, 24 calendar, which is challenging with eight school districts involved in that. It involves Annandale, Big Lake, Buffalo, Hanover, Montrose, Delano, Howard Lake, Waverly and Winstead, Maple Lake, Monticello and St. Michael Albertville, which everyone has a different spring break and calendar schedule. So the staff actually votes on which calendar to choose. And this year, they chose to do one without a spring break, which makes it easier on the school districts. They're also planning their 50th year celebration open house, which is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, May 20th. They are planning a car show, food trucks, Wright Tech tours and more. Wright Tech has been struggling a little bit financially because of unexpected projects. A few years ago, they had a wall issue, boilers, you know, just things happen. So they did have to take out a line of credit for the first time to help pay payroll and cash flow, 60,000. And they plan on paying it back by June 30th. So just trying to manage that. They also have also a lot of other things going on. They hold Monday night school, which started January 30th for credit recovery. They have Wright Academy with enrollment of 86 high school students and the middle school has 10 students. They've been busy with tours for 10th graders, who wants to attend Wright Tech next year? Let's see what else we got. In February, we had the organizational meeting. They have to wait until each board chooses their new school board members because board members can change. So that happens in February for them. I remain on as the treasurer and on their executive committee. The executive committee has now been added to doing the director's review and evaluation. And then their donations consist of different donations than what we have. They had two cars donated, which they were excited about to the Wright Tech. A 202010 Ford Explorer valued at $2,000 and a 1995 Pontiac Grand Prix valued at $2,000 for the auto department students to work with. So that was exciting. I'm also on the middle school parent involvement meeting, which is having a meeting right now. So I was unable to attend this meeting at six o'clock. But they just had a Read-a-Thon fundraiser and raised over $7,000. They usually just do fundraisers consisting of like ice cream sandwich sales at lunch. So that is a lot of ice cream sandwiches sales saved. But otherwise, they're busy planning on activities for the end of the year that's going on. And then they have their spring sports, the seventh and eighth grade boys and girls track. The students that can also participate in the high school activities, seven through 12 boys tennis, seven through 12 boys and girls golf, eight to 12 softball. And then I just saw something about pickleball, which looked kind of cool. That's what I got.
Any questions for Melissa?
Yeah. All right, Jamie Seben, also on a couple different committees. Second. Let's see, first one, I am the representative for PTO for Little Mountain. So they just had a very successful bingo night there. So schools, if you're looking for ways to get kids involved, that is a great way. A lot of people showed up to that. Their next PTO meeting will be March 21st. Also, we have a newly formed transportation committee. So I got the opportunity to get a tour of the bus garage from Joe and meet the owners, Gordy and Cindy. They had a bus, bus driver appreciation day breakfast in the morning. So I got to go there and say hi to some of the bus drivers, which was neat. And we're working on some new curricula, or policy for transportation committee as well. So that's part of the policy committee. Also part of the A&amp;I committee, I think Cindy did a fantastic job of overviewing really what we did throughout that entire process. So Cindy, she kind of took all my bullet comments away. But it's comprised of community members and teachers and specialists and social workers and principals and superintendent and myself. And really, our job was to go through the numbers and the data that our school has, identify gaps and create an action plan for that. So the action plan was based on just like Mr. Olson just alluded to, current data, not old data. So it is a fluid plan. It does change given the current data that's presented to us and what we think, come up with a plan that we think can help close those gaps. So. All right, next is policy committee. We're actively working, we've got some good members on the policy committee. I mean, every committee's great, but we, we really go through everything with a fine-tooth comb. So I want to say it might take us a little longer to get through some of the policies because we really do go through it with a fine-tooth comb. But really, we're, we're working hard right now on revamping the curriculum one as well as the transportation or some bigger ones that we're currently working on. But yeah, we, we read every little letter that goes into those. So a lot of work goes into those. And then also on the wellness committee, our next meeting, our last meeting was February 8th, we went over our well stat scoring. So a lot of people don't know that we rank ourselves as a district in terms of wellness, from physical fitness to nutrition to mental health. And then we also create action plans to make that better as well. So there's goals and benchmarks. And then we get, our next meeting, we're going to be reviewing the policy on that as well and working on that. And then also the activities committee, working with Gary on, we have a plan for this summer to work with Gary on increasing our student athlete grades and some different unique things we're going to do there to help make an impact. Any questions?
You've been busy.
It's a lot. Yeah.
Thank you Jamie and thank you Melissa. I want to apologize to everybody. I don't know that a board chair's ever walked out in the middle of a meeting before. So everything's okay. I'll explain what happened in just a minute after I give my report. So I know that was really bizarre, it was for me too. But this is my eighth week as a board chair, so please give me just a little grace if I make a little bit of a mistake here and there. So. So for my committee reports, I'm the government relations liaison on the board. And I participated in, every Friday morning, we have the Minnesota School Boards Association Government Relations Team provides us with the fastest 30 minutes of the week, is how they call it. And it's an update on all of the bills at the legislature that are related to education, what committees they're in, where they're heard, what the implications might be for districts in terms of funding and staffing and that sort of thing. So for those board members that have, it is on the, the login side of the MSBA board. But if you go under this, the government relations tab, all of those are archived and you can watch them if you're at all interested in going back and hearing from Denise Dietrich or Kim Dunn about our, our bills. So as, as you might have heard, there are quite a few bills related to education that are moving very quickly through the legislature. The legislature was down last week, two days for, for weather. So they canceled all the committees and the, that didn't seem to slow things down at all. This Friday, March the 10th, is the first deadline for bills to move out of committee. So if they don't meet that deadline and they haven't been heard, they're not going to progress through this legislature. There are a number of bills, I'm not going to go into all of them tonight, but I can just say that some of them have funding attached, some of them do not. Some of them have mandates that while on the surface, they look really good. So new graduation requirements, new classes that might be required. Then you look at what the impact might be in terms of hiring staff or maybe students wouldn't be able to take as many elective classes if these became in their current form if they passed. So there's also some labor bills that are passing through there that teachers, I'm sure are very acutely aware of. And that has to do with their time for prep time and different things within their contracts for health insurance and retirement, ERA was in there. Tina, help me, did I miss any big ones? Did I miss any big ones? She's, she's thinking. Tina Burkholder, for those. Yep, insurance. Tina Burkholder is also the committee chair for the School Board Business Officers Association for Government Relations. So she's also on top of all these bills. And I'd just like to pump Tina up a little bit because that's something she doesn't have to do, you know, and that's additional work for her. And it's to demonstrate to you, our public, that we aren't just sitting back waiting for manna to fall from heaven. We are actively involved in finding out funding streams and where to get them and how to, how to process them and all that. So, so that's the government relations. We do have a day on the hill coming up on March the 20th. I would like to invite any of the other board members that have the morning free to please join. We're having a really good, with a panel discussion at one of the hotels. And then in the afternoon, there'll be committee and floor sessions and meetings with legislators. Moving on to my second topic, I'm on the start, school start times work, working group. I believe we have three more of those that we're going to meet. Last week, Mr. Olson gave a pretty thorough update. For those of you that might be a little anxious about the school start time. For those of you that might be a little anxious about the school start times, we'll just go ahead and say it again, it's not, if we make a decision, it will not affect the upcoming September school year. So am I saying that correctly? Make sure I didn't speak out of turn or something about that. We really, it's been really wonderful to be in that group and meet with community members, and the people have been just so eloquent and really laid out the case intelligently for all of the various scenarios that we're considering. Third area that I work on with Jamie Seaborn is, we're part of the, they used to be called para-professionals, but now they have a new title. We are calling them education support specialists. In the Twin Cities, I believe they're called education support professionals, ESPs. So you may hear that term ESS floating around, but it's what we used to call para-professionals. So we're using the terms interchangeably for probably several years until people get used to the new term. We have a labor management committee that is, we'll be having our fifth meeting, Barb, later this month. And we've made a tremendous amount of progress. For those folks who know what an education support specialist or para is, their job has changed tremendously in the last fifteen or twenty years. So the students we have have much higher needs, their skill level needs to be much higher, et cetera, to care for some of our neediest students. And so we've worked out a lot of really complex issues in that labor management committee, and we're going to continue to meet at least once or twice more, I think is the plan at this point. And then my fourth area is the music educators working group, and I don't see any music teachers, are there any music teachers here tonight? I don't see any. That has been just a delightful group to be invited to join. These folks are just passionate about all things music and fine arts and very supportive of each other, and it's been a really great experience. We've met four times, I think, Mr. Olson, since last summer. We started last July-ish, trying to work out some issues. Of course, staffing is tight in their department as well, making sure that we can try to bring back some of the things that were cut years ago, such as individual music lessons. Don't know if we're going to be able to do that, but we're certainly looking at it, and it's on our wish list. And that music educators group is going to continue to meet for the time being, about once a month, once every six weeks, something like that. And then the last committee that I can report on is Curriculum Advisory Committee. You've heard an awful lot about that tonight. A lot of the things that we talk about in curriculum advisory are adoption of new curriculum. There are certain milestones or times during the year that we have to have certain briefings. Cindy has to bring the world's best workforce data to the district and to the board at certain intervals. And so the curriculum advisory committee, which meets four times a year, has been dealing with that, a lot of those issues. The next meeting for curriculum advisory, which I'm sorry is not open to the public, is April the twelfth. There's approximately thirty-five people, forty people on that, of which more than two-thirds are parents and community members. So we are in compliance with the ratios prescribed in the state law for that. So having gone through all of those, I will get back to why did I just stand up and run out of the room? So it turns out we made a small mistake, procedural error. And Clay Swatsky is my parliamentarian, and that's why I asked to have him appointed as parliamentarian in January when I took over as board, because no matter how much you learn about Robert's rules, there's always something that you didn't know or something that you might have made a small procedural error on. And we made a small procedural error. So we're going to need to reopen two motions. The first motion is a motion to reconsider an agenda item, and then we're going to make a motion to approve the A&amp;I plan again. There was not a problem with the vote, there was a problem with how we did the procedural portion of the vote, if that makes sense to people. And if we don't correct it, it could be a problem later. So you're seeing all of our lumps and bumps up here. We're all new at this and we're trying to do it properly. So we're going to go ahead, and I'm going to bring a motion to reconsider the agenda item. And right now, that motion will be only to reopen the agenda item, the motion to reconsider the agenda item.
Second.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor by roll call? Hegley?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Seaborn?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Root?
Aye.
Zebarth, aye. Motion to reconsider the item passes six, zero. Did I do that right, Clay? Okay. Now we're going to have, need a motion to approve the A&amp;I plan as written by Cindy Fasching.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. Roll call, please. Zebarth, aye. Root?
Aye.
Branson? What are we voting on?
This is as written, right? So it's that we're not changing anything in what was written, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It is a motion to approve the A&amp;I plan, the same as the agenda item was presented at six p.m.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the first one. I thought you meant the documentation.
Would you like to begin, should we begin again? We're going to begin again. See how ugly we are up here? We'll get through this. We're going to, I need a motion to approve the A&amp;I plan as written by Cindy Fasching.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. We need to take a roll call vote on the plan as written. Zebarth, aye. Root?
No.
Branson?
No.
Seaborn?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Hegley?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm sorry, four to two.
That's okay.
Motion passes four to two. And now, we are at item seven, to adjourn. Need a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Casey Root, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor by roll call? Hegley?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
Seaborn?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Root?
Aye.
Zebarth, aye. Motion to adjourn passes six, zero. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I do appreciate your decorum this evening and respect.